All right, obviously, you know, everybody's here for, mostly everybody's here for a particular reason. Before we get to the public comment, I'm going to turn the floor over to Lori Collins, our borough manager, to give you basically a state of the borough address. Where we're at, what we've been doing, a bunch of thank yous. Basically, hopefully, there's a lot of questions you guys have, and hopefully, we can answer if you're looking for information and get you some information right now. Lori?
Thank you. I want to welcome everybody. I know it's under unpleasant circumstances. I want to assure you that we're doing all that we can that's available for us to do right now for you. As far as, I'm just going to give an update. We did walk the area and we handed off flyers on June 25th, trying to get information out to you about what was happening at that time. The information that I'm giving to you now is what has happened since that time. So, just more or less giving an update. I know a lot of people don't have access to the internet. Your electricity may not be working that type of thing. We've been trying to post on Facebook when things are out there, when events are out there, when there's all the times for centers that are offering assistance and those types of things to try to keep you aware and informed. So, and we will keep doing that. When we have further information that you actually have to fill out through any types of applications, that will all be sent to you individually. So, I have a listing of everybody that was affected. And when any information comes to us, then it will be in the mail directly to you. So, don't think that you're going to be tossed over. We will make sure that we get everything out to you. And if there comes a time that we need to do some applications and those types of things, we will have a community meeting where we will be there and we will assist you in filling out the applications. So, we're not that far yet, but when we get there, we'll be there to assist you. I'm just going to read this because there's a lot here. It's been over two weeks since the brutal storm of June 20th, 2018, affected our community, bringing with it destruction that has not been experienced in the past seven years. I would like to provide an update on what the borough knows at this point in time, but would first like to thank all who were and are involved in our cleanup efforts and road recovery. I understand this road will be challenging, but we will be here to assist with information and guidance along the way. The list of volunteers and businesses that provided countless hours, whether it be in the cleanup process, providing the equipment to get the job done, or assisting in providing crucial basic needs is astounding. For their part in our recovery from this disaster, we truly wish to list and thank them for all of what they've done selflessly contributing to our community. First, the emergency responders and the fire departments. The Bridgville Volunteer Fire Department Fire Chief and his fellow room, Samantha Woodner-Vilchilio. Fairview Fire Department, South Aet, Oak Ridge, Sturgeon, Lawrence, Mount Pleasant, Bower Hill, Presto, Rennerdale, Kerwin Heights, Carnegie, Crafton, Muse, and McDonald. All assisted. Water rescue teams, North Stroud, Denvo Vista, Stowe Township, Aetna, Elizabeth Borough, New Brighton, East Bethlehem Township, Neville Township, Lonnock, and Beaver Falls. Police departments, Bridgville Borough, Collier Township, and South Aet Township. Our churches and members of the churches. Bethany Presbyterian, First Baptist United Methodist Church, Holy Child Church, and the Vineyard Church, and all the volunteers spending countless hours cleaning these facilities. The municipal public works department that were here assisting. Bridgville Borough, Collier Township, Robinson Township, South Aet Township, and Shaler Township. We can't thank them enough. Contractors, Char West Cog, Don Fina Construction, Britta Van Gery Heather Contracting, Lane Construction, Michael Brothers, Paul Orient Construction, Jet Jack, Weaver Town, and Waste Management. The agencies, Red Cross, South Hills Interface Ministries, LDS Charities, Salvation Army, Allegheny County Department of Human Services, United Methodist Communities on Relief, and Southern Baptist. Donors and volunteers, Mayor Copeland, Deb Palasmo, Cheryl Valentino, Tom McDermott, Cam Weed of PJ's Deli, Seracene's Hardware, Pittsburgh Eye Care Associates, Dr. String. And there are so many that I can't even mention. All those who were kind enough to donate food, clothing, furniture, et cetera, or work to dispense the items, and we thank you. There were many unknown volunteers assisting property owners with initial cleanup that we never found out who they were. They just came in and they assisted and they left. We thank them. With that being said, now to the update. Approximately 126 homes and 48 businesses were affected by this flood event. Three homes have been condemned at this time. As I had reported in my first correspondence dated June 25th, 2018, FEMA and Allegheny County Emergency Services did spend two days within the borough assessing estimated damages. Please note, damages are not included should the property have flood insurance. The information was compiled and has been submitted to FEMA for review. Along with Bridgville Borough, the community declared a state of emergency. It is unknown as of today if the recent storms that occurred in Millville, Aspen Mall, and Fox Chapel, to name a few, will be included in the loss calculation. The loss calculation must meet $18.1 million for FEMA to declare an emergency and the applications for assistance to begin. You may have seen a representative from FEMA in your neighborhood. They are not there to take applications for assistance but are servicing the homes that obtained flood insurance from FEMA. I had a lot of people tell me, well, FEMA was here. FEMA institutes and runs flood insurance policies. So, they were out, but they were assessing damaged homes that had the policies. Allegheny County Emergency Services is meeting with FEMA and PMA this week. We tried to establish the availability for businesses to apply for low-interest SBA loans. As soon as the information is shared regarding the outcome of this meeting, we will inform our business owners. Please understand, applying for and obtaining FEMA funding is a long process. It is not something that can be counted on in the present, but it's part of a reimbursement program that takes months after the declaration for applicants to receive assistance. I've been informed today that Brentwood Bank will be offering microloans to residents in immediate need. Requirement is just a good credit history. Once we obtain more information regarding this program, we will pass it on to the residents. All debris is being removed from the stream with all streets open and functioning in a normal manner. The dumpsters will slowly be removed as the need lessens. The companies have requested we return some of our stock due to the need in Millville. Should you have a brief place at your curb, the Public Works Department will pick it up and take it to the nearest dumpster. Should you not have taken advantage of the tetanus shots offered by St. Clair Hospital, please let my office know. Should there be enough participation, I will try to set up an additional time for immunizations. The flood relief center's updated schedule for this week has been posted on the Bridgville Borough Facebook page. Should you still be in need of supplies, they are overwhelmed with clothing, so please, if you are in need of closing, visit the Vineyard Church. That's where all the closing clothing has been housed. I'll continue to ensure that everyone is provided with accurate, updated information. If you have a special need or concern, large or small, please do not hesitate to contact me, Vilchilio, or council member. We will try to provide you with the answers needed to enable you to make the best choice for you, your family, or your business with the information available. Thank you.
Before, one more person, Jason Ortiz, higher state representative. He's also here. Some words he wants to say as well.
Sure. I promise I will be brief. The only update Lori touched upon, I received a couple hours before a meeting, that FEMA will be down here with the SBA and the county officials tomorrow. So, if you see them walking around, they're assessing the damage. They're ultimately the ones tracking. All the collected and total cumulative damage to get that $18.1 million. What happens at the FEMA level is, is they'll open up low-interest, short-term loans. There's no money available at the state level. So, what they try to do is open it and get it to FEMA because that's where the grand money's at. So, that's why it's important that we get the $18.1 million. So, if you see people who don't have flood insurance, make sure they get down here and file their claim. That's really important. And that's what I've been trying to tell everyone for the last couple of weeks. There are still people, as Lori touched upon, that don't have internet access, who may not have seen the posts or the flyers out there. If you can, if they're your neighbors, they're in the community, let them know so they can get down here and file the proper paperwork. Every little bit helps. It really does. And, you know, when you're talking about the area that it hit, it really doesn't take that much to get there these days. But, just to give you some perspective, there were the storms, I think, or the landslides, I think, in February. They just declared a federal disaster, I think, late last month. So, it was several months after the flood. I know nobody wants to hear that, but that's the speed that the federal government seems to work at when they're collecting these things. But I just want to give everyone the proper level and expectation of time moving forward. I, of course, am happy to work with anyone here along with council, help coordinate with the state and the feds in any way that I can, offering assistance. I know I've had a few people call my office and visit my office. Certainly, I threatened down there, Lori. But when it flooded, I was in Harrisburg. My first call was to Lori and then to Mike. They were both gracious enough to give me a few minutes to explain to me what was going on. And I really appreciate that. Lori's been doing a really great job. She's been coordinating with me for the last couple of weeks, keeping me up to date until I got back into the district. And again, I'm really thrilled with the huge list of fire departments and the communities around us that have come here to offer assistance. I think that's a testament to the relationships that the fire chief has built, to the council, and ultimately, to everyone here. Because that just doesn't happen by coincidence. So, I want to give a special thanks to the fire chief and his crew. I know they were working and grinding out. When I saw you, Bill, I thought you were going to pass out from exhaustion. So, it's good to see you here. But again, I want a special thanks to Bill and to Lori. Lori's been working her butt off for you guys. I hope you guys see that and appreciate that. I know that I have. She's been keeping me up to date. So, again, if there's anything that I can do in my office, I mean, we're literally right down the street. I'm happy to help send the same to council here. If I can be of any assistance to you guys during this process, please do not hesitate to ask. And I will certainly maintain contact as I keep in touch with FEMA and the county officials as well. Thank you guys for allowing me an opportunity to speak tonight and hopefully, get some things moving soon. Thank you, guys.
All right. One more thing before we get to our first visitor. I want to thank Lori's husband, Terry. I know you left him off the list, but he helped a lot for us in this community and also keeping Lori sane. So, thank you very much. Council, we'd like to recognize our first visitor. Thanks, Lori, and please.
One thing, we have a lot of visitors tonight. We want to try to keep everybody three minutes so we're not in an interest of time. So, try to be concise and also try not to be redundant. So, if somebody brings something up, we don't need to hear it a second time. We all know where the hot spots are. You know, we all have an idea what the solutions are. We know where the hot spots are. We are working on this, so that's it.
Thank you. Well, Lori pretty much said everything I was going to say. But I got some real pictures here. I don't know how devastating that water was. I mean, I was a spring shower compared to that, okay? And come down the next day and see all the people working and helping, giving things. I mean, it's just a tribute to everybody here, you know? And it's just amazing when people come together. They're working and dying. So, I wanted to thank Lori. I mean, the dump will come again. Holy work is nice, you know? They work around the clock, you know? I mean, I get down at 6:00 in the morning. They're down there, still working. So, you guys did an amazing amount of work. If you saw these pictures of what looks like three or four days later, it was just outstanding, you know? Okay? You guys really did work. And, you know, all the people that were here, I mean, the different communities.
It's overwhelming.
It's overwhelming, you see. Except for maybe St. Clair, they were dusting off their golf course. You know?
That's what I'm saying.
President, thank you. Mayor Copeland, I'm sure he'll speak to the town. I have a couple of thank yous. Ed Song back. That cold water was really appreciated. It was right at the right time and right at the right spot. And he was just one of the hundreds of people in our community that came out. Just very much appreciated. You know you've got a problem when you've got votes from Neville. They're coming to pick up people. Lori? I don't know what else to say other than you're amazing. I heard the story about the shoes. You're all so crazy, but I'm glad you are crazy. I've been where you are. Somehow, I escaped without one of these ones, but I've been there. I know that this isn't easy, Mr. President. I know it isn't easy for anybody. Our public works did their job. I'm hoping that maybe over the next couple of months, some planning can occur. God brings rain. Man brings planning. Clearly, this is not news. This is, I was just making the second or third raining of a great event that has hit Baldwin Street in 2018. This is a continuing problem. It happened in 2013. Danny's picture of the side of his garage where he marks them off. We've got to reach out. Do you have this event on June 20th? But it's not new. There are a couple of things I'd like you to consider as council. First, a request for proposals from a hydraulics engineer. We have pleaded with the Army Corps of Engineers for too long. Bridgville has to take care of Bridgville. I'm asking our council to consider requesting proposals from hydraulics engineers to look at McLaughlin Run and see if we can find a solution. I know everyone, I have my own ideas. I'm an accountant, not a hydraulics engineer. So, we should get some good information. Let's get some requests for proposals. It doesn't cost anything to ask. Find out how much it is. Second, people are trapped. Not trapped by water at the moment. They're trapped in properties that they cannot get out of. If they sell them to someone else, that just means someone else is trapped in a property in a flood zone. I would ask council to consider a resolution asking the manager and the attorney to explore acquiring flooded property. Yes, FEMA has some programs for this. But before people completely put tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars into properties, perhaps council could look at it. The third is really tough for me. There is a project that is near and dear to my heart. The south end of Washington Avenue, where we sit in traffic every day to get on Interstate 79. That project, last meeting, council authorized $488,000. Let's call it a half a million. I think council should rescind that authorization and hold Bridgville's money for Bridgville. It might come in, you might end up being able to use it in the future for that project. I think that that project is something that's very important to me. I fought for it. I want it. It's important to our town so that our residents can get home at night, can get to work in the morning. We all agree, it passed seven to nothing, right? I'm asking that you consider rescinding that. Between now and 2020, maybe the state, or for that matter, the federal government will come up with the money to do what is a regional project. It is an entrance to a federal highway. So, if they come up with the money to do the highway project, that leaves $488,000, a half a million, for you in this council to use for Bridgville. Thank you very much.
Council, I'd like to call on Janice, Janice Gray.
I'm here to represent my 91-year-old mother who lives at 1011 McLaughlin Run Road. She has lived there for 67 years. She has had several basement floodings. Sure, we've lost furnaces and hot water heaters over the years. Never have we had a flood like this. It came on the first floor and it came into McLaughlin Road. And that was because up by Coolidge Street, where it meets McLaughlin, I thought it was a water main, right? But Lori told me it wasn't. But it was clogged source, blew a manhole, and flooded the road. The water then came into her house. And thank God my brother was staying with her that night to get her out. We were waiting for rescue people. They came, they saw that they were okay because they were sitting on steps watching the water came in. But the steps they were sitting on, my brother could hear the blocks being pushed down from the foundation. So, the whole foundation is ruined. I just talked to the engineer and he's going to come tomorrow morning to look at it. There is police tape around the house. My mother has lost everything. Was it source clogged? What hasn't been done on McLaughlin? Why did this flow? The creek was half-poured. The creek was not overflowing when the road flooded into the house. He's right.
There's an answer to that question. Coincidentally, the day that the flood occurred, Coolidge Street was milled to be prepared to be paved, which means that when all of that water came down that roadway, it went straight into our catch bases. If that street had not been milled.
To say, to say, no, whether it's milled or not.
No. We have records because we are required under our MS4 permit that we have vouchers in here.
They miss McLaughlin.
In every area throughout the town, we clean catch bases. Every time it has flooded since 2004, right after the water and the two to three times that it has flooded this year, we have cleaned all of the catch bases.
Can you tell me the last time it was cleaned on McLaughlin Road?
Yeah, I keep a folder with everything, your folder.
You didn't follow them. You didn't do the blocking.
Also, McLaughlin, they said the creek has been cleaned. McLaughlin's creek has not been cleaned out of any debris.
No, it hasn't. Not at all.
We're not permitted to dredge.
I'm not saying dredge. Get out the garbage that flowed down there.
From over St. Clair.
From over St. Clair.
There's a telephone pole across the creek now that's still going to be removed. Next storm, if it comes up high again, it's all part of the flood. You need to send someone all the way up the creek.
On McLaughlin Street, it's McLaughlin Run.
Has to go from Baldwin up to McLaughlin.
And it starts up at St. Clair.
And then, something has to be done while up at St. Clair.
Question, if my mother's house is condemned because there's police tape around it. Also, McMurray Fire Department was not recognized on your list. They were the people that came and knocked on our door and says, "Does your basement need pumped up?" We said, "We don't know. We haven't gone down yet." They went down and said, "Oh, you've got to get out of this house now." We said, "Give us an hour so we could try to rescue more things." There's police tape around and hopefully, things might be resolved tomorrow. But who condemns the house or who tells me what happens?
The building inspector.
And who is the building inspector?
The building inspector is Dan Felton.
Dan did not condemn that house.
Why? I mean, nobody's told me anything.
We did not condemn that house. Him and I walked down there. We walked all the houses that had severe damage. That house is still considered to be habitable. If this needs repair, there is no structural damage.
The whole foundation, if somebody would came down into the basement, they would see blocks are blown up.
We were down in here.
You weren't inside. It was locked. How could you be in there?
We caught in, ma'am. Me and him walked down. We caught in. The blocks are done. There is no sagging on the house, no nothing. He said, "All it does is need the block put back up." We've had this before, previous floods in the town. The house is repairable. That's why it was not condemned.
Our insurance man was there yesterday and said, "It's going to cost you more to repair this than what it's worth." It's worth $56,200. Now, it's not worth anything. I'm between a rug and a hard place. I'm looking for help.
We understand that. Some people don't want their houses condemned because it puts them in a different category.
My mother doesn't have the money to pay for it.
I understand that, ma'am. I'm just explaining what went on that day. And he did not condemn it because it is repairable.
Can somebody else give a second opinion on this? Not that I...
You have the right to bring somebody else in if you want. Yes.
We have some other houses that their foundations have caved in. And they're actually, one of them has already started to repair. So, the foundations, when they caved in, are repairable. And that's why we don't condemn them. Condemning them is stating that you can't repair it. It has to come down. Unfit for human habitation means that it needs to be cleaned out. There are maybe some electrical issues, that type of thing. You can't live in it, but it's not condemned. So, if it's fixable, just like there's, actually, the two houses that lost their foundations were both down at the corner of this street. One lost both sides. Both sides caved in. And the other one, one side caved in. And in 2004, that house, the other side caved in. And they're in the process of fixing it right now. So, because it's fixable, that's why we don't condemn it. Condemning is when it's falling in and nothing can be done.
But there's police tape around that's saying that we cannot go in because it's dangerous.
Now, we go down. It's not habitable. Now, there's two different levels of condemnation. There's where this lawyer's explaining. If it's declared to be something that you can't live in right now, which it is, and it's uninhabitable, and that's why it's declared that way. There's eventually an assessment that it's not uninhabitable, but it can't be fixed. It's an unstructured, unsound, and needs to come down. Then that's a different level, demolition level condemnation. And their assessment is, as Vilchilio was trying to say, is that that's not a monetary assessment. That's a structural assessment from the public standpoint. You're sure, yes, they may have. The police tape and fire tape around some of these buildings is around it for safety. Not to keep you out, it's to keep everybody else away and safe.
Well, why didn't you tell her that then?
She hasn't been around. We put it up.
I have been there every day. How about better communication then? There's been no communications.
Well, the letter went around too with my number on it. You could have called my number. I had a lot of people call that.
That's my fault.
I'm not saying it's your fault. But, you know, I could be in so many places at so much time. It's very stressful all the way around everything. You know, I am trying, and she is, the borough is, trying to help everybody. But you can only get pulled so many directions when you have as much devastation as we had in this community. And that's what people got to understand.
I tried to be patient until I came, I finally called Lori on Friday.
Did you just give me a pocket step of English, Lori?
Yes. I need help. I just, you know? Can you say my opinion or something? I need help.
Just, just come in.
As long as there's, I mean, everybody can have story like this. And we need more have to sit down on an individual basis.
You know, they're collecting taxes. Then you have her information.
Please, if we might run a time, please, so.
Contact the people who own the office to talk. There's a rumor going on about floodgates. We're going to be put up by McLaughlin Run, by the park, and then that was caboshed or whatever. What's going on with that?
There are no.
Not floodgates. There's some debris from over St. Clair coming in.
Trash rack.
Trash rack. Trash racks.
We were going to move forward with that, and we spoke to the Conservation District. And we have to submit additional plans before we can install.
So, it's still a possibility?
It could still be a possibility, yes. We had a permit for slope stabilization and a small trash rack area that when we looked at the design, felt that it wouldn't be suitable for what we needed. And when we called the Conservation District, they said the design wasn't the same to pull with us. So, we have to call into Conservation District to ask them what they will give us a permit for to put up there because we understand the degree it's upstream. And we're trying to do something to protect the residents' house.
Thank you.
Why mark the consultant ahead of schedule?
Council, I'd like to recognize Lori Givens. Counselor, recognize Laura Givens.
Our company purchased a house on Carroll Avenue. Laura, loudly, loudly. This is the second time in five years that we've been flooded. The first time we recovered within a couple of weeks. This time we lost everything. I have employees that I'm concerned about. I have gone to meetings, I have gone to church, I have numerous calls to different people. There's no help for businesses. Sure, they'll give us a loan. We don't have any income right now. What happens when you lose? I'm concerned about that.
FEMA and FEMA and the calendar meeting tomorrow. And so that's, do you have flood insurance?
No, and that...
So you'll be included in the number as far as FEMA. When and if it's in Claire, then you will be able to apply for assistance, reimbursements, everything that you lost, that type of thing. You could be, don't have flood insurance. Unfortunately, the way the process works, and it's very slow. And there is, there actually comes some help from businesses before the residents. They're looking to try to enact the SBA loans, which are very, very low interest loans. Just trying to get businesses back up and running. So they're, that are very low interest. That's coming before anything's coming for the residents.
That doesn't help.
I know, and there's the...
I contacted the ECU of society and they're willing to give me money for zero interest. Okay, I don't have business rights now.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. And that's the frustration as far as ego. Because I would love to tell you that the state has a disaster fund. They don't. Just the federal government has a disaster fund. And you know, as far as, you know, people losing their furnaces and their water tanks and their washers and their dryers, if they don't have flood insurance, what are they supposed to do?
I understand.
I'm sure.
And how does that suck? Well, my insurance... Is flood insurance? We did have flood insurance. And our agent, our insurance agent told us that if there's a ceiling on it and it won't cover so much. And there's a positive document. It's not worth it. The first things people ask is, do you have flood insurance? No, we didn't. And the second people, the second question people ask us is, how do we move? I have scoured the area here this past two weeks. And there is nothing available for us. And I'm going to watch. And it's unfortunate because we would like to, I mean, we will reopen our business. We will. And for us to have to go through this, I mean, I understand that there's a room full of people. I understand that's their residents. But once again, I'm taking a lot of those. And I just, I just feel very bad for that. Sure, they're... How are you...
Oh, I understand. I understand. And that's, you know, that's why we try to get all the information that we can from Allegheny County Emergency Services and FEMA. I call them every day to see if there's...
I don't believe it.
If there's anything.
I spent hours on the computer trying to find stuff.
If there's anything. And I have a couple of organizations that come in and ask me if there were businesses or whatever that could not open their doors that needed help. So I can give you some numbers.
Okay.
That may be able to use some assistance also.
Thanks for your time. And once again, everybody was so afraid of hearing this situation. We had some people probably farmed their kids. Came in and was like, it's not a question. And just started taking things out. And they worked so hard. And I asked them for their number so I could do something for them. And they won't give it to me, or they didn't. Did your supervisor on the sign that she said that I'm having? The support for your family. It's possible.
Counselor, but not very wise.
I'm taking entirely different things from the last meetings to say to everyone in this room. I'm the oldest one in this room. I have never seen devastation like this, never. We used to play on Charter's Creek. We used to swim, we used to skate. I never did get down to go up and run. But we never, in my lifetime, had this kind of disaster, which is exactly what it is. And I could cry with you, I wouldn't be able to help, but I could cry with you. I want to say to everybody who responded, Bill Chilio, the fire department, all of you people who worked, our mayor that worked, the people in my church worked. That was probably the best thing I saw come out, this whole disaster. Churches and the community were starting to work together. And with that, thank you very much, Laura. And everybody here, thank you very much.
Counselor, recognize John Rettini? Sorry, sorry, my last name?
Rettini.
Rettini.
I've been original thirty years in the insurance business. So you know, every time this happens, I have to deal with it. I slowly suffer with my clients and my family. And we just keep going around and around. And I hear people today talking about these isolates, their lives and how they're impacted. But I don't see any real movement. I got flooded out three weeks ago. I flooded out six weeks ago. Just keeps coming over and over again. I propose that the Borough Initiative or Development Committee will look at creating three pillars of action. One is to put together a group of volunteers who understand how to work through bureaucracy and provide support for people in Florida. To know who to call, what forms need filled out, what agencies need to be applied to. So that these people who are coming here without a clue where to go, have an access point they know and get this information. The second pillar would be, we need to come up with a real immediate action plan. If it rains tomorrow, we're back here dealing with this again. There's been no real solutions in the short term. I know we were talking about what we try to do with the barrier upstream. Obviously, that didn't make that. There's some other people going to talk about the immediate problems we have. But we need a committee to drive that home in a year. And then the third thing is, we need to come up with a long-term plan. So we should form three different subcommittees and task forces. Each with community members who are, maybe they're engineers and working volunteers. Right, contractors that work on an immediate action plan. And then of course, people who have worked in public service or whatever that can help switch on community members getting through this crisis.
There are, we do have, we are working on a long-term plan.
Well, I think what we need is to focus on all three pillars of that source. And so I would like to propose that we create a committee that puts together these subcommittees that can address these three. Because right now, like I said, it just seems like we're just here doing something. Thank you, thank you.
Take a sec, please.
First, I'd like to fire one of the cabinet people out of my house. Because I had surgery. Thank you there. I want to thank all the people that helped clean up. Now, the one thing I want to bring up before I forget is Charter's Park. I don't think the borough should be dumping logs and leaves and everything in case there's a flood. It's going to be pushed downstream, just how we suffer from the debris we get from Upper St. Clair.
Charter's Park and McLaughlin Park.
Charter's, they use that to dump, okay? And another thing I'd like to know about our property taxes. Are our taxes going to come down? And what do you do to this with our property? Now it's funded eighty percent, roughly. Thousands and thousands of dollars, all of us. Family heirlooms that can't be replaced, okay? And just buying new appliances. I'm on my second furnace in three years, okay? I don't have money now to pay my taxes in August. So what happens now to the people that aren't financially able to pay their taxes now? Because all the money they had to put out for their houses getting flooded. So, you know, that's probably assessments.
Well, as far as the assessment of the property, we could contact the Office of Property Assessments and give them the addresses of the affected houses.
Yeah, we've been flooded down three times this year, this year. And I think Baldwin Street has poured down some flood, sure.
And that's how the valuation is calculated?
Well, I'm just bringing, I'm bringing that to the attention.
And we could call in and see if anyone can do that.
And another thing with the flood insurance, that's a big joke. Last time I got flooded, I got sixteen hundred dollars. And that didn't even pay for the furnace. And a lot of people in here that have flood insurance, they don't cover their contents in the basements. And they give you ten cents for a hundred dollar item. It's a big joke. But if this happened in another country, our government would send billions over to them, just like they're doing in Puerto Rico. We'd have to lay it back, you know?
Recognize Mr. Matthews.
I'm actually a pass. I'll leave a character.
Bob Prior.
Yeah, thanks very much. The people that... Well-known, you can even shirt off your backs to the neighbors and stuff. And with the Fire Department and the police and other people, I don't know if you're aware of it. But rather than us complimenting, thanking each other, I think we should concentrate on what a couple of the people that brought up. A solution to the problem that's permanent and to get the millions of dollars to do it. This is a regional problem. I want to mention this to you. I ran, just two weeks ago, by accident, I ran across a nineteen-eighties state study flooding Bridgeville. To make the recommendations brief, all of the old bridges in Bridgeville are too small, except for one of them ten years ago. These are just two examples. The Culver Street Bridge, which is forty, fifty percent smaller than some of the other bridges. And as you all know, right two hundred feet up from the Culver, that's behind the little ice cream place, is the bridge over Power Hill Road. It has a center column, collects all the debris that floods. Baldwin Street, we're rapid here. I just like to go on here. The state study said all the bridges are too old, too small. The creek channel is also too narrow, too shallow, and not walled in. The tens of thousands of new homes and businesses that were built upstream and up to St. Clair and up to Park obviously also contribute greatly to what's been happening. This study was done in nineteen-eighty. That development, those two foundations have continued for two more decades. The state study recommended widening the openings under all the bridges or replacement. Widening the width of the creek bed, encasing and/or walling in the creek bed around the stream and reforming the abrupt, there are three abrupt ninety-degree angles to lock the creek that takes, which means the centrifugal force threatens the balance. And again, the solution, the branch of terms, as happened to be made. There's a vet blade that just said, we need an army corps of engineers, we need hydraulic engineers. And in the final analysis, the report says, Bridgeville doesn't have the money to do it. We can't get it to. So I think the time has come for the officials and people in the community to convince the federal, state, county funding agencies that this is a regional problem. This is no wonder a problem just for people in Bridgeville. I'd like to suggest, so if you guys would move away, one other thing. This area right here is, I drive up to McLaughlin Road for a second.
Twenty-five seventy.
Power Street, that's actually fifty, fifty. Matter of fact, you and I and the guy from the DDP. This is five years ago. Oh, I thought you were there. The guy from the Department of Protection came down. And I gave him the measurements of all these bridges in Bridgeville. I don't think he believed me. And he and I waited in the creek to measure this one. And he said, these are, it's not just this bridge. This is, three of the bridges are terrible. Anyway, there's a fifty thousand square feet area up at McLaughlin Run. On the right, it could be used to build some sort of bridge or collecting area. Also, I think, Laura, you're also working on a similar idea of having a similar collection area over the park. Is that the Bridgeville Park or the area? Over the Bridgeville Park on McLaughlin. Those things have to be aggressively pursued. If you guys would move away, I'd just like to suggest, show you one of them. This is in regards finance. Anytime you ask Pendelaw, the federal, state government for money, for millions, which you need to this project, I want to know the returns, all right? And what, one of the ideas that I'm suggesting is, that's Baldwin Street. And since the study says that McLaughlin Run should be encased in a large concrete conduit, let's say from the Baldwin Street Bridge down to the Culver. One of the possible things that you could look into is making Baldwin Street another central business district in Bridgeville. Making Power Hill Road four lanes wide over top of Culver that I just referred to. And this is just, this is just the drawing of that content. I think by convincing the powers that be, if you want projects to show up, it continues to, they should, a lot of things of this nature should be...
Real quick, I would recommend, when it comes to next, I mean, it doesn't look like that, that there is something that is similar to that.
I have one more, one more comment. And the people in Bridgeville, I'm probably one of the people in the area.
You and I.
But that's my question.
He is very old. He is old.
And anyway, I've been here a long time. And I think the people in Bridgeville have suffered more than they should have. I remember as a kid, the chemical factory in Satie, excuse me. I was executing toxic fumes that we all breathed for decades at night that I would know about. And then the cement company here, a third of the people in town breathe cement dust. And I was with FEMA in New Orleans after Katrina hurricane. And they spent a week training us about the dangers of sending people back into sewage saturated homes. The people in this community... The people in this community, excuse me, have had to do that several times. It's unfair.
They pretty much said what I wanted to say. One was about the Upper St. Clair and trying to get that taken care of. We don't get flooded down in here. The other one was with the business, the lady talked about her business. In our business, as you know, okay, we had no insurance, no flood insurance, nothing. That's a nonprofit place. I had, all my catering things were in there, all of our equipment was in there. We have not even a napkin or anything left in our business. My truck, I was at work, just painted it off three months ago and I lost my truck in the flood. I have no vehicle. I lost my computer. I lost all my stuff in my truck. I lost everything in water up to here. Climbed out of a window to save a pie in our bar. Just all kinds of stuff happened. I have to go get surgery on my throat because of the stench and the debris and everything that was in there. I had a kid with, he's on steroids. He's on major antibiotics. They want us to still continue to work down there. They want us to still continue to clean it up, which is all fine and good. But I don't see anybody coming to us or helping us either. And I'm very upset about it as far as money wise, assistance, anything. I've been to the churches, they're wonderful. They gave us cleaning products, they gave us blankets, they gave us tables, they gave us all kinds of stuff. But I've been trying to get a vote of P M. I walked up to the guy here, he didn't want nothing to do with me. Soon as I said to him, I have no insurance, he went, I can't talk to you, and walked away from me, okay? I've been to probably four or five different people. I have not received phone calls from anybody. I don't know where to go to, I mean, I live in Hickory, okay? So I have to get a half hour ride in here and a half hour ride back out there, okay? Just to try to clean our business, to get my employees to get some money in their pocket also. And none of us can do anything. I need to know what I'm supposed to do. And is there any help for our equipment, my truck, my stuff that was down there? And for, I also have tenants in these buildings. I have a lady, she's handicapped, she has steps that go up, it was all the way to the top. Her floor boat had to get her out also. She, now we might have to destroy that building. I have two tenants and everybody has nowhere to go. So, I mean, it can't be we're working on this or we're going to wait for this or that. We need to move. We need to do something soon. And if you guys can guide me somewhere to talk to people, I have no problems talking to anybody. After Thursday, I probably won't, but give me the calls and I will do whatever it takes, Lori. You know what I mean? I don't live here, but all my stuff was down here. And my girls are down here and my tenants are down here. And it's a business that, we have three hundred and sixty-nine members that work in our business. I had a gentleman that's a member, his whole complete trailer camper thing, probably sixteen thousand dollars, gone, gone. Can't pull it out. And another thing, when I was getting into my truck, I went out and someone said, your truck's going to go under. I go out, it's up to my door, so I go reverse it back. And I said, wait, I'll just drive through and go up to Cogo's. They wouldn't even let me come out of the road, okay? Now me, it's four wheel drive, I'm crazy, I'm going to try it and it'll be my fault if it didn't go through, okay? So I should not have been told, don't go through. That's my truck, it's my deal, okay? Instead, I listened to them, I backed all the way up and my truck's floating, water up to the ceiling. Just painted it off three months ago and now I don't have full coverage, okay? So that's where I stand. Yeah, I have insurance, nobody, but full coverage don't, you know what I'm saying? That's what I'm talking about. That's my way to get back and forth to work, okay? Now, not one of my people are going to help me at our club, so I'm asking for people here to give me some help. That's all.
Okay. Do I have to help her?
Puerto Rico.
If there's just a point about Puerto Rico, it is hard to be nice.
So is Bridgeville. Yeah, so is Bridgeville. That gave ninety-two billion dollars, okay? I gave it to that slot.
Like recognize Randy Thompson.
Badger, where's that water go?
You're staying the office. We all can point and say, yeah, that's their cause.
They hope to sewer in the Upper St. Clair. I don't believe that either. Oh, wow. My sister gets a little knife. She was young, she was like, Lori ain't listening to you. That and another thing, I already talked to Chad. You know, people come down Baldwin Street, eighty miles an hour, there's kids playing. They skateboard down the street. Why do you play? Someone's going to get killed on that road.
You heard Chief Reese say?
I heard him spoke earlier. Right, talking. There's four people that you could sit here, you could sit there. There's never no one else on that street. And there's cars on up and down the street, you know? I walk. Thank God I don't have a license.
We can go through Bridgeville and I bet you there's, everybody that doesn't bring up, plenty of bodies feet on their street.
I'm worried, but that's land there. Where's that sewer?
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. We worked in that chemical plant, we're still living.
Recognize that. Jenny Bean?
I just wanted to give an update on the Bar Thirty-One fundraiser from Saturday. Kenny recommended me to pass along the information that four thousand dollars plus was raised. So he's calling that roughly almost five. Bar Thirty-One's going to match that with another five thousand. They're going to present it to the fire department on Thursday night.
Shady Muds is also, they did a charity thing at Rum Fish and they did it at Tiki Merrill Beach. It's also supposed to come to you guys too. I talked to Bob from the Shady Muds, you're getting stuff together. So that also should become to you guys too.
I can tell you that Saturday, Thirty-One was a lot of fun. Too long! Chris Horn?
I'll try and keep this short. My name is Chris Horan. I'm here on behalf of my family, DNC Supply and the Bridgeville Rollercocks. So I'm pretty young, but this is the third time that I've been through this. You know, I had a little bit planned out here, but my dad made a comment the other night when he got home and said, I don't think anything's going to come of this, it's just going to happen again. And this was after him working sunup to sundown all day. And he got up the next morning at seven a.m. and was back at it rebuilding the business. DNC Supplies is its fifty-eighth year of business this year, started by my grandpa and has been in Bridgeville all fifty years. If that doesn't show resilience, I don't know what does, along with a lot of other people in here. I think the residents of Baldwin Street, the businesses of Bridgeville, and really everybody else that is a member of this community deserves a lot better. So I really hope something can come of this and really be something that comes up with a plan like John mentioned earlier. Short term and long term, because it's something that needs to change. We want to make sure that this community stays a community because I don't think many people want to take this much money.
Karen?
I'm Karen Battle Martin. And my husband and I own Light Printing Company on Baldwin Street. This year, Light Printing Company celebrated sixty-eight years in business. My husband and I have owned it since two thousand and two. I listen to what I hear tonight and what I see we need. We need leaders, we need leadership. My question to everyone, all of these council members, how has the flooding in two thousand and four, two thousand and eight, multiple flooding since then? I called Lori to complain, we had sewer backup eight times since April. And she told me my employees could use the restroom down here because I have thirteen employees. So when we have sewer backup, we have to use the restrooms. What I want to ask everybody on the council, how has the flooding impacted you?
Bruce, hey Bruce, tell her, tell her Bruce.
I have six pieces of property between my dad and my brother and I. I'm a Lockman Run driver. All six were damaged, severely damaged, okay? Our garage got in our shop damage.
So you have a vested interest in it?
Is this about vested interests or is this about the community?
Yeah. This is.
No, that's very much, is it about vested interest in? Or is this about the community?
It's about the community, let me tell you. I employed thirteen people who are now worried.
Are they from the community?
Yes, that they have jobs. I pay taxes. How many businesses did you think were impacted by the flooding from Baldwin? Forty. They all employed, all those people. You know what, the first thing I was worried about the morning after the flood? My employees, they have homes, mortgages, car payments, they need to buy groceries. When thirteen people are no longer able to be employed, what do you do? And I know all forty businesses have employees, okay?
When does the community become our vested interest? When does this community become our vested interest?
And that's what we need, a borough council, we need good leadership in this community because, no, they're.
They would have locked it out of your doors, they would have locked since both of your homes.
Our early responders are great, right? But in two thousand and four, we had a bad economic impact. My husband and I carried a double mortgage on everything we owned since two thousand and four. I came to council after council meeting pleading with them to do something because we carried a double mortgage. It was everything we could do to stay in business and keep employed. And I know there are several other in this room the same way. And yes, we have a mixed use street. There's homes, there's businesses, okay? It's impacted everyone that lives there, but you also have employees of the businesses that live there too. And we have poor leadership in this community. I'm sorry, what we do, because we need an action plan. When something like this happens, I want to see you on the street, you, you, you. I want to see you on the street.
With me there.
You're walking on a street. Where were you at?
I don't know, I drove from home for nothing, I guess. I drove from home for nothing, drop you off.
They did, some of these members did. Why don't you all tell each one of your stories, how you hopped in the flood zone and tell me how it's going to economically impact your lives, okay? You offer us Mr. Verbucci alone, I'm still paying on another one, okay? I want to know how you stayed in that community and how, the day after the flood. The early responders were there, they saved lives. Let me tell you my story, alright? I left my building at ten to nine, completely unaware because I work late, a lot of nights. I work sixty, seventy on a week because I've been carrying a double mortgage on Baldwin Street since two thousand and four. I left the building ten to nine. My neighbors didn't know where I was because at nine fifteen, my van in the parking lot was submerged and my restroom was flooded. It didn't matter, my life was a matter of fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes this time or I wouldn't be here. I would have been in the same position as that poor woman in Upper St. Clair. And I called Lori in April, I called Lori in May. I have letters, I have complaints. I've been here when Mr. de Blasio and Michael, you were there when we did this walk, when was that, twenty sixteen? In town, we had Army Corps of Avengers come in. What can we do to save our borough? What can we do to take preventative measures? I came to a council meeting and I remember Mr. Petroselli saying, let's not spend the money on Baldwin Street, let's save it for a rainy day.
Fifty thousand dollars as well, not to walk on you.
My lessons from over millions of dollars. I know there's plenty of businesses in here. Let's talk about economic impact, okay? You lose everything in your building, all your content, your building, thirteen employees. How puts the economic impact of everyone's employees in here when they can't pay a mortgage? They can't buy cars, they can't pay their bills. But what's that of how many employees in addition to the residents were impacted? We're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars this fell alone. Yet you all sit there, what do you talk? The church is doing this, early responders. What are you getting? We need real leadership. We don't have it in Bridgeville. You should be wandering down there, talking to everybody on the block, all the businesses. What do we need to do? We need to take immediate action. And I agree with the gentleman who said, we need a short term and a long term plan. I've heard plans since two thousand and four and to plenty of meetings, I've seen no action. It is your job as leaders of the community to mitigate the problems and protect the people of this community. They're not protecting us from sewer water. I hope you all like your letter today, June twenty-sixth, about the sewer backup program. Let's add insult to injury. I received a letter on July sixth from Lori Hall, day two twenty-sixth. We're delighted to tell you that you are now part of the sewer backup program. Like I heard before, two thousand and sixteen, save it for a rainy day. Petroselli, because it's in the meeting minutes. We need people on this council and in this borough that are action takers. Not sitting just on the bench.
I'm staying, I'll go with the answer. No problem. I think it's important to get Catherine, your wife's here too, I believe.
She, she'll stay.
Okay. And Jay Sermano?
I just wanted to ask, Lori, is the best place to find the most up to date information, is that on the Facebook page?
Yeah, as it comes into us, I try to post it there, hoping that, you know, it's the easiest place for me to browse social media.
A website too.
Really, we haven't had any substantial information to put out there except for the, you know, the centers that have been helping as far as clothing or that type of thing. When we have more information, forms to fill out, all of those things, they'll be individually mailed to everyone. So, you know, you'll get what you have to get, just the different changes in schedule.
We put a bulletin board around town in the areas, like in public.
Yes, excuse me, some people are in their homes to get their mail. So how can they find out? Do we, on Facebook, do we go to Bridgeville Borough, Bridgeville Police?
Bridgeville, Bridgeville Facebook. Bridgeville Borough Facebook.
I'm on the Bridgeville Borough website.
The link was broken today on a state of emergency pop-up. There was no information. Link was broken today on the website.
For what, Bridgeville Borough?
Bridgeville Borough.
Oh, it just says state of emergency showing me. Did the state of emergency link come up?
Or it'll just be nothing, it'll say there was a.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So badly we still can't get it?
Yeah. Yeah. So is it Bridgeville Borough?
It's special for Bridgeville Borough.
Yeah, and it'll come up.
Mike, you still want to go at the end?
Yes.
In your, in your office.
My name is Mike Chia, I live at two thirty-three Station Street. I felt pretty bad, people were hurting. Lori, take our dog to Lori to get done. And bad. I was here for Ivan, I was on council. Believe me, those days, a lot of us worked sixteen-hour days. It's hard. You know, they can't do everything, you know? But you have to do. We have a state rep, standing here, it's the first time I saw him in eight years. I don't see our state senator, okay? You're the ones that can take action. You have to hold your feet to the fire. Phone calls, you gotta do what you gotta do, okay? There should be, there should be a disaster fund in the state of Pennsylvania. There is not. It's because of the state legislature and the state senate. We have to change things. It's a little upset. We have to hold your feet to the fire. We can make a change. These people work hard and I don't, I don't agree with them a hundred percent. And, you know, they take their knocks, which they should because they're also politicians, so we have to hold their feet to the fire. But to accuse them of not doing anything, I don't think that's right.
Can I just add something? In two thousand and four, when, when nobody sees anything getting done.
Nobody sees anything.
Right. We apply for, the Army Corps of Engineers is where all the money is. That's where the millions of dollars come in.
And they would never let us drive, judge yet.
No.
They would never let us, they were going to find us when we were going to put a track over.
In two thousand and four, we applied for the Army Corps of Engineers to do an Act Two O Five study. That's what has to happen first before they supply any type of aid or approve any type of program. They turned us down. They said the cost of, and the cost of a project in that area did not meet the benefit. That, the federal government is where the money is. We, we can't get twenty mil, one culvert is a million and a half dollars. The bridge going over Baldwin Hill Road is two million dollars. Um, we're looking at a long-term plan to do everything the right way, to do everything. To do everything.
Fourteen years ago.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. Once they turn you down for an Act Two O Five study, the circumstances do not change.
Right, so think on your feet and come up with various methods of your own to mitigate the problem, Lori, and then.
The only mitigation of the problem, Karen, is for us to start hazard mitigation for the properties that want to leave the area.
No, mitigate the problems. From two thousand and four, you had fourteen years to think about ways to mitigate the problem for the community.
The Army Corps of Engineers is worth the money, yes.
It's a million dollars. Why don't you add up how many millions? Millions, people in this community have lost since two thousand and eight, the floods, and now, millions. What's a million dollars? Do something collectively with private ownership, the property developers. Think on your feet to protect your community, that's what you don't do. You don't know what I did, Karen. I know, because I've been in business everywhere enough, I don't need to come to complaints.
I, I have a floor. I don't agree with Mr. Fry all the time, never, actually, I never. The study from nineteen eighty, the study from nineteen eighty, I think that needs to revoke that with the bridges. The bridges, you know, they tax the crack out of us for gas. That money's supposed to go towards bridges. Like I said, we need, we need to hold their feet to the fire to get that money, to make those bridges wider.
Mike, we've also been in contact with the county as, as far as the bridge over Baldwin Hill Road, the one that has the, the center there. And as far as meetings with the county have gone since two thousand and four, they have informed us that it is not structural renovation. And they will not assist us in replacing it. So if the borough of Bridgeville needs to replace it, the borough of Bridgeville will have to replace it. About the county is not going to do it.
Lori, excuse me, I, I'm, like, I don't show you, but, okay, so I've been in conversation with Rick Fitzgerald since the Saturday after.
Right.
Okay, I'm Jenny Sullivan, here at Warehouse, we're at the center. Oh, we were at the bottom of Lake, Lake Baldwin, what it's called.
Right.
Okay. Along with the club.
We actually have a meeting with them this week.
We have the retention and I agree. Instead of firing bullets at each other, could someone please direct us when the fire keeps, the fire lit under these people? Because Mr. Fitzgerald sleeps beside that creek, right there. And that's live, that's not a picture. That's how bad it is. We sleep at night with this beside us so I can watch the creek. There's crack thunder, this is what I look at, okay? I don't want anyone to ever have to be on the other side of the phone that I was on, on the other side of the library or other. And I couldn't get here, held my life and kid, get vehicles and things out. And yes, Bill, things aren't as important as people. But at what point are people more important than critters in the bottom of the creek? Because the bottom of the creek can't be touched when it's a sunny day. Because my dog, whenever there was an emergency, Alino had an excavator in that creek that he couldn't fit anything beside it. So that's when we have to find out, what are the rules of the game so we all know how to play it? And that's what I ask you people to point us in the right direction. John's point is, is accurate. Divide and conquer this thing. Mr. Fitzgerald asked me, who owns the bridge? I said, you do, sir. I said, and the borough owns the pavement on top of it, and I believe the state owns the rest of the road. Somebody needs to get their act together and coordinate this. Because this was avoidable. And God bless the woman who passed. But it's only by the grace of God that that's not what the focus is of this evening. And more people don't have someone in this room who perished. It's gonna happen. I have live video and I can replay for anybody who wants to see how it went down. Because our cameras worked right up until the night, until the night it happened, right up until the minute it was over. Well, I stayed there for two nights to protect our business in the parking lot. And also need to thank the chief and his folks too, because the police presence was undone. And I know because I was there. So that's what's gonna happen. We've only been here a short time. It's been four times that she's been flooded this year. And it's the same people who had all their brand-new belongings going into the dumpster. So John's three-point approach is appropriate. And it's time that something happens before we're talking about a real tragedy.
You can't go deeper.
Right.
You can drag it, but you can't go deeper.
You need a comprehensive plan to solve the problem. You can, you can get the numbers if you're tied to an economic development cost. Land and DNC supplier, you could put up ten high-rise apartments there. The Baldwin Street area, those properties are worth nothing to the flood plan. By redoing, by making that another business district where the people that want to stay there can stay there and move across the street. That's how you attract millions from original, maybe there's a regional project.
That'd be part of our, that's part of our plan that we've been working on with the planning commission.
Year and a half, two years.
One more. Sorry. Does anybody know what Act five, uh, was it five forty-two? Does anybody know what that is? House Bill five forty-two? Anybody heard of it?
Yes, fireworks, fireworks law changed this year.
Right. Fireworks?
Yeah, thanks.
Do we have the ordinance for the time when fireworks?
We do not change our ordinance to.
PA law has changed.
We change the subject.
But that's true.
Mike, to give a quick rundown of Act five forty-two, this year the fireworks law changed, actually changed in late twenty seventeen. A lot of fireworks.
It hasn't changed, this is the first time it's changed since nineteen thirty-nine.
Correct. Correct. And actually, I think it went through in twenty seventeen to effect in twenty eighteen. There's a lot of fireworks that are now legal that never used to be, basically mortars, bottle rockets, cherry bombs, you name it, it's now legal in the state of Pennsylvania. Used to be, you know, the way you determine, interpret the law, a lot of these side of the road fireworks stands could only sell sparklers, items that would throw flames into the air. If it went into the air separate and went boom, it was illegal. That's how, that was the layman's way of defining what's illegal versus legal. Now, it can go into the air and go boom. They doubled the powder capacity. You can use mortars, bottle rockets, as I said, cherry bombs, firecrackers, that's not illegal.
Nothing over a hundred and fifty milligrams.
Correct. But it more, I think it more than doubled from what the old one was. And I can tell you what the places sell in town at the, that's all, that's all legit.
Wednesday night and Saturday night, believe me, these things were more than fifty milligrams. And there are restrictions according to the law. You can't take niterre to discharge on public or private property without express permission of the property owner. These people were, they were setting them off on the church property without permission. You cannot discharge, not discharge with a hundred and fifty feet of, not in quite structure. All the neighbors on Hall Street were out because they were afraid their house was going to get torn apart. That's how big these, this, this state was.
I know.
Both nights.
Mortars are pretty potent, they're a lot.
I think, I think we need to look into that. I think we need to get a ordinance, ten o'clock. My dog, my dog's still shaking it.
We could put it, we could put a time right line.
I hope, I hope you consider it.
And I'm sorry, individual contact.
This is, this is true, it's a period of work, with you people on, yeah. What, I think, I hope I win the lottery.
One last, one last comment, sorry, you had something you wanted to say, wait.
Yeah, I'll tell you exactly what Baldwin is. Your infrastructure, absorption of water in your sewage is back. This problem is not going to go away until you correct it. It's water, Upper St. Clair puts money in their storm sanitary lines. It's not bad, has a sore fork, that's all, rudimentary, you have to contract. Semi-robust pipe cleaning is not going to correct your infrastructure. You can snake a pipe through your blue in the face. If the pipe is broken, if your sore water is going into your sanitary line, they're both broke. That's where your sewage comes from, your house. It overflows into the sanitary, it overflows, it comes up your line and into your face. If you fix the infrastructure, it's going to continue to happen. I'm a new resident, I've been, I bought my house in August. I haven't even had a cure a year. I've been flooded three times with raw sewage. And I live on New York Street. And my heart goes out to the people that are a lot worse than me. But I live on New York Street, all the.
What address, sir?
Three twenty-three. And I also am pretty familiar with storm sores and sanitary lines. I work with a neighbor in Borough and you guys have a lot of problems. And it's, it's not really, it's not for me until you start digging up and replacing lines. Whether it's storm sewer lines or sanitation. I've been here, I've been here, bought my house in August, by that January, I had five inches of raw sewage in my house. I got no, I have no water coming through foundations, coming up. Your, your main line is the problem. It's backing up, it's coming, I'm the first one on the street to get it. And then my neighbors up the street get it. Every time it rains, this is the third time I've gotten flooded. It's costing five hundred dollars the first time. My contractor's not even done with my basement. I got flooded the same way that these people flooded on Baldwin Street and I got, I don't even have my basement painted. And my brand-new travel office, John. So until, you can talk to your blue in the face about it, you don't have to discuss that. Bottom line is, all these other boroughs are putting money, the time to fix their infrastructure. You can talk about bridges, that's all important, but bottom line is, until you fix from your storm water going into your sanitation line or vice versa, you're still going to get sewage in your house no matter what. Now, I personally, I'm going to put a backflow valve in my house. It's going to cost me money and I want to know if you guys will pay for it.
Actually, if you contact Lori, because she already has your address on where you're located.
We have a couple of programs going on right now.
Because all the water comes down west, which is from St. Clair, which they're doing all kind of improvements throughout there. Because I worked there. Bridgeville is in pain. We get all, everything else from everybody else, but Bridgeville's the one holding the back.
Yeah, we actually started a backflow prevention program this year. It took us, there were some, the attorney had to do some legal work and that type of thing to, to get it going. And it just happened that he got everything ready the week of the flood. I apologize, I sent it out when I got it. But we can put you on the list and what, what we're doing is, we're putting the preventers in. We also have a million dollar a year sanitary sewer budget where we're mandated by the consentors, just like all the other communities. We, we.
We do structural repairs, we do lining, we do manual inspections on water, for example. It's an ongoing process.
And, and it's, it's a million dollar budget every year.
Oh, I understand, it's very expensive.
Yeah, but I'm saying we're, we're doing it, so.
We've been doing the same thing as the other eighty-three communities have in the past, just. And she can document, we have, appreciate folks, and we don't want to lead you astray. I have one thing that needs to be said, please, if I might. Is there things we can do to mitigate it? Have we been working on that plan exactly like that on Baldwin Street for a couple of years yet? Are they talking about, or are we looking into the hazard mitigation that allows us with other people's money? Do we not have a funds to do the buyouts of, under the hazard mitigation plan yet? Lining the sewers, the storm service. When you have an event like happening in Ivan on May sixteenth and on June twenty, there is no storm sewer system that can handle that. And we're not being truthful, people are looking you in the eyes and telling you that. When you get three inches of water in that timeframe, Joe, you can help me. It's ballgame over. You cannot stop that sort of, please, I'm trying. I had another engineer calling, his was on a golf course right two miles from here. There wasn't a structure within a mile. That was a, it turned into a river, six inches deep and a hundred yards wide. We have micro hurricanes right now. They park themselves. A week after your event, I was in my home in Runderdale, I didn't have a drop. McDonald and parts of Mount Pleasant, where there is not heavy development, completely wiped out.
I'm getting water with less than a moderate rain.
That's different causation and we will help you with that. It's not what happened. All I want to do is. And the borough will work.
There's a problem with your line.
Okay, the borough will work on that. Folks, please appreciate sanitary sewer line deficiencies or storm sewer deficiencies. Can't afford to do what happens when you give three inches of water over your borough. Uh, three days ago, I spent four hours driving through Upper St. Clair, Buffalo Park. They have water retention areas, they're, they're eight inches wide. But in, in Buffalo Park, they got, it's a sub-irrigation, they got four million dollars to build a concrete tunnel, twelve feet by, five feet high. Almost a half a mile down Logan, you probably heard that, down Logan Drive. Took, protect twenty.
To protect twenty homes, we're talking about two hundred homes, two hundred people here, we are entitled to big money. There are lots of different reasons, we've heard arguments together, presented to the right people, but showing them that you can get return from developed property like DNC Supply in Baldwin Street area, that's, with that promise, we did, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate everything you guys have gone through.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
After Julie Durand, uh, also DNC library door was like, after listening to all of our stories, the one thing that really sticks in my mind is, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. Do we have a timeframe, do we have a month, do we have a year? If we get flooded again, my eighty-four, five-year-old father-in-law is not going to make it, neither is my husband, neither is my son. We need a timeline, we need one month, two months, a year, something, we cannot live like this, we are living under very, very stressful situations right now. And I need a family back, and these people need their thumbs back, we need timeframes, that's all I'm asking, give us timeframes and give us action. We cannot live like this one more death time, can't do it.
Yeah.
Do we have a response on that?
We're, we're...
Not we're working on it, we're not on it.
No, we've been working on a pro, a pro plan for Baldwin Street for the last two years. It doesn't, it isn't something you can fix with thousands of dollars, it's something you can fix with millions of dollars. Thirty million dollars.
Just Chris Wan in history, for fifteen years, it's thirty million dollars. We discussed, I'm in running commission as well, will be, will be good if you people show up on a plan to submit to hearing that, what we're trying to do in Baldwin Street.
I just wanted to ask.
Like the chamber need invite you to be there.
Is that what you're saying?
I said, I just wanted to ask, because I seem feeling a little bit of this issue, I moved here last February, and I just started my daughter in sixth grade at Sherpings Valley, and I'm now at six twenty-seven, and my landlord told me it's going to be five, six, seven months before my apartment, you know, back up and running. So I'm tempered, bouncing around to like family houses to have somewhere to stay, what am I supposed to do for this following school year for my daughter?
Man, I suggest you talk to Church's Valley, but probably in my opinion, that's still your place, and you still live there, and if they have any difficulty with, and you communicate, you please communicate back.
I didn't know they had some kind of like, you know, forgiveness thing, because obviously, that station or something.
The fact is, somewhere else in my mind, that's where you're not living where you live, even though you've been physically put out of your home. Please do, because we can help you communicate Church's Valley, you know, people, people are sure people are not gonna miss, but if they want to, please. Paul, I've seen that in fires. So where families out, and they live in another community, like they still go to the same school, that's a definitely contact, yes. Same, kind of same scenario to where you're, this place is going to double up.
Excuse me, moving forward, one of your points. Well, we have a meeting, we're meeting with the county this week, next week, I know, yes, to talk about the bridge, which is, which is a, uh, which is obviously a part of the problem, uh, we're going to be working, we have a meeting, uh, set with the other communities along the floodplains, they would like to work on a expansive plan on how we work with the communities together, and instead of us having alone, and them being alone, how we work together as a community, it's a regional problem.
Were you part of those meetings? Were you part of those meetings?
I doubt, I do not know, I don't, I don't feel it would be a public meeting, I doubt it.
Who's spearheading this, who would be our point of contact, we'd get the information about?
It's Lori, our borough manager.
Well, Lori's kind of got her hands on the bill, but Lori, about everybody else. Lori's the CEO of federal. Yeah, I understand, you know what, and that's really what's amazing, that all of this falls on Lori, she does a great job of this, honestly. She's not perfect, she's helping people get with FEMA, she's helping with FBA, she's working on the, the mitigation issue on McLaughlin Run Creek. She's, she's doing it all, I mean...
And now you know exactly how challenging and professional the position of a municipal manager is now.
She's the CEO, that's what she does. If I mean to find out what the outcome of that meeting with the county is, we'd like, uh, we can't, that's just not fair. That's her actual position. Eric, that's why I think it's about the board, not about you.
Then you guys have to give her somebody to assign, or call me, first.
Fair, call me, Mike. President.
Is this sewer back on, you folks?
Uh-huh. I'm on McLaughlin Run, we've never bought any, but it's for me, uh, anything.
What we did was, we started, it's a, it's a pilot program, so what we did was, we started down Baldwin. And we're going to do it in phases, we'll be coming up with McLaughlin, we'll be going down Maple, um, we'll also be going down Brookfield. Um, the homes that, that received backup, like the gentleman at three twenty-three, I had no idea that he was having backup. So, um, just give me a call and give me your address, um, we've, we've let the contract. Sure.
Because my next question is, can we give out the fund for the flood victims?
Yes.
How is that handled?
We're actually, um, everybody's been so gracious, and the fund is, is building. So I think after, um, all of the fundraisers are in, then there'll be a determination made as to how to distribute the money fairly and in a timely manner. Um, I know there's a comedy, a comedy show fundraiser that the, uh, fire department is holding on July twenty-eighth, and there's another one. There's one more.
GoFundMe Chamber.
Uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, the Chamber, it's a GoFundMe, so there's a couple more that are coming in, and as soon as we see that everything's in, we, we want to do it fairly, as far as... Yeah. Do we get a touch of here?
I've heard that, yeah.
We'll, we'll send, what, what, what did you think the best way to do it is? We've, we've talked about what the fair way to do it is, and...
I think there's going to be a committee, I think the, like, virtual meeting, we're going to have a separate committee, um, and it's not going to be, it's, it isn't our decision, it's council. We'll have representatives from the community, community, I think they'll work on, or figure out if the best way, whether it's, all right, if it's a hundred people or two hundred people affected, and we divide it up, or, or as it, as neat, I don't know, how they're going to come up with that.
Lori, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Since you seem to be the end of the line for a lot of these elections, maybe there should be a resolution to give her some help, at least for six months, so she has somebody who she can task to do some of this, because, look, we've put a little business back on the face of the earth within a week. I can tell you, I sure as heck didn't do it alone, it took a lot of people, and that's just one small, and you're talking about a multifaceted business that you're trying to do. But people need to know who to contact, like, I'd like to know who we can contact in this conservancy group, district, whoever they are, who pulled the plug on doing something in the short term to provide time, if nothing else, it provides time to allow Bill to come down the street and say, get out, the water's coming. Because that's unfair, are they going to come down and clean up Baldwin Street?
Lori's everybody's point of contact, all circulation flows to them.
Let us all put our energies towards pointing to the right people, whoever stopped that, that that's criminal, that they would stop and attempt, even if it's a Band-Aid. We'll take Band-Aids right now, we'll wait for the surgery, the sutures.
You gotta go up to Upper St. Clair, somebody's got to raise some hell, get them on the TV.
It's time, it's not just the community.
Upper St. Clair doesn't do squat when it comes to what flows down from their end, there's debris in there still coming down the tennis court, somebody's go go and rattle their chains too.
Go to their next council meeting.
Yeah.
Everybody here needs to go.
They don't count, they don't pay taxes.
They don't, you're right, you're right, they'll rattle their chains.
You're not going to be allowed to skip at that podium unless you're tax paid, but what we can do is get these other organizations to police the case. Like, that the county go over their heads, who we need to, to target or who we should, because it means it's hard to wait time for the older communities to stop paying for the prosperity upstream.
You're right.
We actually have, um, been in contact with representatives from the county. Um, we've been in contact with the Conservation District, um, we are contacting the DEP, and we want them to come down and look at what we have and tell us what we can support.
Why don't you come down and face everybody?
You know, what can we, what are you going to let us put in this stream? Because we were ready to do it, we were under the declaration, we had to post in, and if you don't follow the criteria of the Allegheny County Conservation District, you can be fined up to twenty-five thousand dollars a day, so...
And if you do follow the mechanical business for the fourth time in one year, day one, last year, thirty years ago.
It's going to go down. It's going to go down. Yeah, so I have to make the hardest mental work out, which was horrible for me, because I felt like we were doing something.
We talked about it, Bill, when I talked about it, I applauded you, because it was something.
It was something, well...
Something goes a long way.
Right.
Can you put concrete coffins in there, they're temporary, can you put concrete coffins, locks in there? It's, and, and tell them, tell them, they come down and fix it down.
Yeah, we, we want them to come to the table with us. Or, you know, or, we're, we're always told no, you know, we can dredge, um, you're only allowed to take sediment, uh, out of the stream that you need up from a bridge, you can't go any further than that, um, those types of things.
Only two weeks, you mean, Ben?
They, uh, yeah, it's, you know, you can't take machinery in the stream, I mean, there, there's so many criteria that people just have no idea that we have, we, would we love to just get in there and dig that thing up and make it wider, it's absolute...
A lot of lines will stop me from doing that, because I know for a fact where the water line is, I was standing on it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would absolutely love to do a lot of...
Trust me, I would put my machine in and make it zoom out.
I know, I, I, I understand, but I can give you the numbers of the people that we...
Put it on the website, so everyone can call them, maybe they'll get sick and tired of answering their phone, like, we're sick and tired of getting flooded.
I will.
Good idea.
I'll put it on there.
You shouldn't take the burden on all this, let people stop firing at each other, start firing at the people that can do something. We have a phone number of a couple people, and they've been very receptive, I've been impressed with them so far. And Bill knows I've been impressed with him, because he said he tried to contact someone, and within fifteen minutes, Jenny had one called.
Yeah.
So we have their attention, to let this fire go down is absolutely ridiculous, it's, it's just inconscionable.
And when we, after the two thousand four flood, um, Onorada was the county executive then, and they came and they did it for, and they talked about putting a bull nose on that, on that pier, so that the debris would slide off more.
Yeah, I want to see why that more work come over, I'll show you a little bit.
And, and they, they never came to do it, and we never really questioned it, because I never really felt that that was going to solve the problem.
No, they're, instead they're going to improve, they're going to fix and patch, enlarge the stupid thing, and probably spend half a million dollars, take the half a million dollars, put it in your pocket, and put it towards the, whatever number it is to replace that. And we told them, and, and, and my buddy, my friend John was standing right beside me, who by the way is an engineer, he doesn't, a lot of people know that, that's not a problem, it's a watershed problem, you gotta get them all taken care of with something like this, and you can't raise manholes in the middle of Doggone Bridge that's supposed to be passing water through it, it doesn't take an engineer, I mean, my twelve-year-old daughter could come in here and tell you that, that's stupid.
Yeah, that, that manhole has been horrible a long time.
Here's another thing that you're saying about them watersheds, you know, these, all these new developments are out there, and they have to put these watersheds in. There is nothing in Pennsylvania that says that they have to be maintained, or that nobody can go and inspect it and follow up on it, and all these new developments have been put in for over twenty-some years. They put them in, then they'll be maintained, and there's nobody to go out there and inspect them, so they're full and plugged, where do you think that water's going?
Well, you've taken everybody's rainwater off of the roofs and everything else, and you've taken out of the sanitary system, which requires you now to clean the sanitary system, because it doesn't flow in low times.
Right.
And it puts it all into creek too.
Right.
So just with that one move, they probably quadrupled in amount of water and watershed.
You want to develop something, you have to have a retention plot, but you don't have to maintain it, or have to inspect it after an accident.
But let us go to the other people, take some of the people off of you, let people go to the source.
We have season, but you would hope well-connected political people from councilmen here, Obama, you should know the right people to talk to in the county, the right representatives in the state to put a fire on.
Do you think this is going to help?
Just give you a little advice, if the county council believes in tomorrow, it's not a shock, it's in the cold weather.
Where?
Exactly, it's in the state, it's cordless, and it's been downwind, it's not pressing. There's somewhere to show that it's a county.
But that's where John's idea of having a contingent, that can show up as a collective voice representing the borough of Bridgeville, makes sense. People who are committed to following this group. I mean, I'm, I'm usually would step up and volunteer, but, I mean, we'll do whatever we can, as long as it's not futile, it's got to be appointed.
Thank you. All right, um, on to the regular meeting.
Pete, something, if I could stop out, I'd like to see that video of where, where that piled up, because one of my suggestions tonight's going to be is that we, and I talked to our solister about it, is tethering all these dumpsters. Because what happened there was from dumpsters, and actually the dumpsters were doing you a favor, until the water breached from the alleyway. Yeah, well, that's why I'd like to see the video. It actually created a waterfall, it created, just so you can try to create, if you watch the video, there was, the dumpsters bound themselves in a way, that there was a spillway. Okay. And it wasn't until the water came down Baldwin and breached the creek the wrong way, that it plugged up completely. Okay, well, that's, that's what I'd like to see. Prove your theory, that if you can stop this, not stop it, if you can collect it at points along the creek, look, Mother Nature holds strong guard, if you decide to play it, you're done. But that did show that as long as that water was rolling over those dumpsters, it was fine. It wasn't until stuff went in behind them and plugged completely, that it would literally look like if you had a glass of water under a faucet. Can you burn me a disco bet? I can, I can too, because I'm not that type of one. Well, that's, well, I'm just saying, because with our, our security cameras, we've burned this for the police in that, in the past. But we, yeah, and, and we, we were following up until the power went out, our battery backup, we had died, and we lost them for all of this life. But if you could give me a disco bet, I'd really appreciate it. Yeah, it's, um, it's terrible, it's...
Sir, I can assure you, the very reason I instigated the meetings in the county state fest next week, that was exactly for the reasons that you said.
Well, I just, you know, there's a lot of emotions, and, um, look, that's really Jenny's story. I'm just the guy who couldn't physically get there to help her, and that was the same thing as... Did someone else have to die? Because it's not by grace, but that didn't happen this time. I mean, honestly, it couldn't have been her, because I saw her do something, but I asked her, please, and then her do the hand, which was going to try to rescue something out of the lot. And though even though it's a good thing I could make it down there, because I probably would have been coming up and doing the same thing.
What you have to understand is the bullet that we dodged too, because the bullet that we dodged by this happening at the time of night that it did, because in that flame down there, we also have a daycare center during the day, and an animal daycare center, imagine if this happened at noon.
Yeah, it was roughly forty hours.
Yeah.
I mean, and it was way faster than it happened, and it was five weeks before that it happened, and all of us was debris five weeks before. It created a beaver dam, and water was still going through, but it never completely got stopped up. And frankly, well, her, her that parking lot becomes the retention plot. So, fair or unfair, that's just what happens, because five weeks before she lost a lot. Um, and that's what made this one more hard to digest, because, and just like everyone else at the club and neighbors down there, I told Riss and Cheryl, I said, you see all those dumpsters and all that stuff sitting on the curb, none of them's more than five weeks old, it can't be, because everyone had it. None of them's more than five weeks old. It can't be because everyone had it placed there. But, yeah, we're always there to help you guys.
Thanks. Minutes. Motion Borough Council regarding events of June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, starting event. Current estimate estimated.
So we're.
Bill, all those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, resolution number two zero one eight dash zero seven, motion of Borough Council regarding resolution number two zero one eight dash zero seven. Resolution as made the extension of the declaration of emergency of the original borough for an additional ten days period due to the flash flooding experienced on June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
So.
Bruce and Nino, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, current estimate number one, two thousand and eighteen, paving maintenance program contract A, motion of Borough Council regarding the middle. Current estimate number one dash two thousand and eighteen, paving maintenance program contract A to dump that young blood paving in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-six cents for one completed day. These estimates have been reviewed and approved by engineer sites.
Pass him with.
And Joe Klosman, all those in favor?
Uh, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
The bottom of Coolidge, where the roads all were supposed to stay through.
Yes.
Or pound through. That was like the effect of the paving from young blood, uh, the grinding in that, from what I understand. Water came underneath and they ground that. Is there, is, is the county gonna take care of that or would you ask that? Because it's really.
Yeah, let me look at it first and we'll get, get taken care of.
Okay.
Okay.
There was actually a hole at one time.
There was a hole there too.
Yeah.
It, it put some, it put some asphalt on that stuff. They, they did that. So I'm just, we need to address that, you know, in association with what they did.
All right. Uh, that passed, by the way. Uh, Bill, this, uh, motion Borough Council regarding the July two thousand and eighteen, Bill, this.
I'll move.
Joe, Bruce, all those in favor? All opposed. Carrots, cable, motion Borough Council, favorable of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven, and August three tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So.
Bruce.
Thank you.
DJ, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, monthly reports, a motion to accept the payment, motion to do, uh, June two thousand and eighteen real estate tax collector report.
I'll move.
Joe, Rucci.
Sir.
DJ, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries, motion to accept the date two thousand and eighteen financial report.
I'll move.
Joe?
Sir.
And Bruce, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed. Motion carries and motion to accept the June two thousand and eighteen payment report.
So.
Thank you.
Bill, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Community report, anybody?
Administration, I'd just like to say, um, thank you to our staff. Not just Lori, but our staff, there's more people behind her and even Mary from the police department. I mean, with all these people around Door over the last two weeks. I just wanna thank the public.
And Bruce, so. Finance, Joe?
Um, that was very unfortunate.
Uh, Parks and Rec, Bill?
Uh, real quick, that's, we're locked in one park, it's closed till further notice to be flooding. Uh, on the news, that deadline extended to June sixteenth. I'm working on it. Should that go to June first, then business. People next to where we're being done on top and stuff. All right.
Uh, Nino, public?
Uh, nothing much. It, uh, whatever less, uh, less month, of course, it is the community day, which public work, in Lori and council, they're all work for that. Surely, everybody is pitching. And as far as public work and everybody else for the fight, I mean, I call everybody public work because we all were working. Every single one. I don't know where they get these people. They don't see this and they don't see that. But this is all I want. A, a, a good job is done by everybody. The police department, fire department, council people, employees, everybody pitching hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, public safety, Bill, please.
Yeah, Mike, I'm not, I don't want, just a little big thank. Local police department, fire department for the response that night and in the following two weeks, you got tremendous, so thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. I'm now mayor.
I'm thankful for everyone who has been busy with the flood. The first person to call me was Connor Lang and then also C. Mead from Allegheny County. And Carolyn Coy Kaye from Bethany Presbyterian Church was one of the first to call and say that she was organizing a group of people to go out and help people clean their homes on all the streets that were affected. So I'm thankful for that. PJ, who served over five hundred people free meals and she's still offering free meals now on all, all Wednesdays and Thursdays. So God bless us all and help us to really love each other and, and get this community back to where it needs to be.
You're the now mayor. You're nice. Police chief?
Thanks, House President. Um, it's in no sense in giving detailed report, you've been providing regular report, stats from last month, but, um, you know, I, it was nice. I think some folk who have stuck around so we could talk about how people came together and well, the churches are doing and where people can go to get items that they may need. Methodist church still has cleaning supplies. Holy Child Church is handling the furniture storage. Their gym is filled with capacity to the point where we're working on trying to get them extra storage units outside the church. Put just appliances in that people want to donate. They're, they're having to turn people away. They're getting so much equipment. Also, a second storage unit would be helpful for people that wanna go down and kinda claim or tag property as theirs that aren't ready to put it in their apartment or houses yet. They can then claim it, move it to the outside storage unit. Work can be held until their, their place is ready. The Vineyard Church has a ton of clothes up there and I know Christian Ministries was even in the area helping people with cleanup and recovery. You know, word was getting out, not only through social media, not only through the borough website, but there were people from each individual church groups going around to people on Maple, McLaughlin, Malden Street and spreading the word. So I don't know how some people aren't getting the message, but there has been a great effort made to spread that message.
I agree with you. Thanks. Tom?
Yeah, my, your solicitor's important. All right, and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't wanna poll on either and I'm not a politician, but I'd be no mess if I didn't say one thing. And I said this, that leader is somebody, somebody who wants to follow, the folks who wanna follow, the people who plead for it. And with all respect to everybody, chili eight, three-plus days without sleep and all your meetings and E and W and all that. But I'm sorry, if there's one person, it's the difference between last street doesn't look like it looked Thursday morning and how it looks today. Her name's Lori Collins. That's all I have to say.
And her hospital hospital had its own power to wash and gans.
Right, right. It was.
He was, he was taking it out.
Okay.
This is like the trio of meat.
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of people down there.
I know you have to follow her, but the rest of us, because she's.
Joe?
Uh, you have my written report. Again, I, you know, figured I'd help everyone anyway. Tim, I had talked with Fred Benham, the flood control authority, last week and we talked about if there's something that can be done along McLaughlin Run, maybe we explore the possibility of the flood control authority taking over the operation and maintenance of that. And it's a multi-municipal project, especially since Bridgell and Upper St. Clair are members of the flood control authority. So it's something to think about and is, is one of our resources. So we can, we're, we're helping out.
Bill?
Thanks, Brother President. Again, from the fire department to everybody, thank you for thanking us and everything else, you know, we appreciate it. Just a couple of things on that night and week and days and everything else after. The night of the incident, we did fifty-some-plus water rescues with boats from all these departments that came in. Uh, we had over thirty just on Baldwin Street. I wanna say it was a little over ten on Carol and Brookfield. And I never got the true numbers of what was on the block and the maple. So I was kinda rounding that up to about fifty-plus is what we did with the boats. It was, uh, a little tough getting boats at first. North Trapani, um, my hat's off to them because they were under fourth rescue when all the other boats finally started coming in, just to let everybody know. Because these boats were trying to come to us, but as they were coming to us, they were running into already floodings in other areas. Trump won, Campbell was on road and Festival in South Park and throughout the county. You know, it wasn't just Bridgell that I hit. You know, there was multiple areas. There was actually three counties involved that night. So it took a little while for some of the boats to get here now. And some of the ones that we had were as far as from Fredericks Town out there in Washington County, it was the Green County line. Uh, we did have one town I think was from Green County. You're talking Beaver Falls and New Brighton, Ever.
Chief, how did they find out from here, just out of curiosity?
They, when this goes on, like early in the night, as probably most people, if they have their phones set up, a warning went out about flood warning for the area. And you heard it on the radio, then you heard it on the T V, things like that. Well, Allegheny County does, they put theirself into a storm mode and they're watching it. And they actually at one point in time before all this happened, they put all these swift water teams on standby in their stations for deployment. But they don't deploy them until they get areas that are hit. Well, it all hit at the same time, so it was very thin.
Did they deploy these guys from different areas? Did they know an idea where they're going?
Yeah. I mean, we had from Etna and Blonoff, or yeah, Blonoffs coming too.
So Allegheny County was saying, hey, you go here, you go there.
I personally called North Trapani right away because, one, they have a paid staff. And, uh, I've known the chief for a while, we worked out an agreement with that. And his guys were actually en route to do one in Peters. And Peters ended up getting the person out, so they were already on the road, so that's how they bought area quicker. So they were set up and ready to go. They were on nineteen actually in Peters, so they made it here pretty quick. And they were in the water and going pretty fast. And after their fourth rescue, they had a motor problem. They fixed that up real quick and they were right back into it. So, but the one thing we did as the Char West College Chiefs Association, we had our meeting last week. We are actually looking into putting in our own swift water team too because the demand out there is just becoming more and more in general.
Yeah.
If everybody pays attention, flooding is happening more and more. And it's even happening in areas that not getting it, and now they're getting it. So it, it's become a problem. So we, as our Chiefs Association, we are actually looking into it and talking with, uh, Orate's office. The state has some money available, so we're gonna try to obtain so we can put under the Char West College Chiefs our own teams together too, so one assists us and other people in our college or elsewhere. So we're gonna be working on training people and that. It's gonna take some time. It'll probably take a better part of a year before we're probably really out there fully functioned and ready to go for it. From getting the equipment and the training. Because one of the trainings that the people have to go through, we have, they have to go to Harrisburg for I forget how many days, because they have to do the training in this hospital in the river under, they have a place set up to let their taxi pull the swift water and that. So they literally gotta do it. They have to swift water when they do this. But, um, some of the other things about that night and we've kinda touched on a little bit was the animals in the canine pup. You know, we did have over twelve dogs rescued and had people in there, had them up on a second floor. We did lose a few. So it felt bad. But one thing I do wanna emphasize to everybody, and I got into a couple of arguments with some people when this water's going up. Your vehicles, your property, you're a more priority to me than those things are. You know, I know you've got a lot of money invested in that stuff and everything else, but you know, reality is, we can go get another one. But we can't go get another life. And there was two different instances where I literally got into a pushing match with two people that were three times the size of me and I wouldn't back down to them. Because it was in my heart, you know, it's on my mind. Because if they go in and go, it's my butt, it's my butt that's gonna answer, why did you let them go in? And some of these people saying, we gotta let us go get that stuff. It's my butt being the one in charge here. And I gotta answer to those family's attorneys. The girl with the truck, if she wanted to drive out, well, why didn't you stop her? They'd be suing us. It's a vehicle. It can be replaced. I, I, you know, I hate to be that way, it's unbelievable. A life, a human life comes first, animals' lives come second, property's last. And that's something that needs to be emphasized out there. And you hear this all the time out there, even the news media is gonna, don't drive in flooded roads. Three inches of water will knock you right off your feet. You can't even do nothing. And you're gone. So that's something we all need to look at. You know, the best thing to tell people what they did that night was to stay in their places and get the highest calls. And we caught them. I do know the boat rescue people did tell me there was one family that they bought out that their house is a single-story house, but the water was at their neck. When they bought to them, it was at their neck. But caught them out. You know, but the coordination, everything that went down that night with the number of departments and everything else went really well. I was happy with a lot of that. Um, I had used a lot of my other departments, fire departments that came in, I put them in charge of different things, different areas. You know, I had multiple areas going all at the same time, but I kept track of everything. If you would happen to be with me at the, where I was at, watching, I always checked on, over here at Carol and Brookfield. I was checking on the McLaughlin, Maple people all the time. I had my Baldwin and Carrera Road area. I was always rotating around. It's a, it's a lot, I call it organized chaos. But it, it went very smooth and everybody that came there helped with participation. And one last thing is, I made the decision the next morning when daylight came to suspend everything we were doing to put people in, to, uh, start looking for the missing lady. I wanted to confirm that she wasn't in our town. We kinda had the inkling, but I wanted to make sure if she wasn't, that we could say, no, we already checked our area. But we did find her and at least we gave the family some closure. They did come down and thanked us and everything else and appreciate that. We stopped everything for her to give them closure and that. But everybody that came, they assisted us. It was just great. I mean, I even gave my guys that Saturday after it over, I told them, we're done. We had a picnic on the station. I invited a lot of the fire departments that came to say, come down, we're cooking some food, got some drinks, things like that, we're gonna relax. And in the middle, Tom happened to be down there, we got hit for three calls right away. And I'm like, that's it, we're trying to relax. I ended up calling St. Tantia up and I said, we're done, we're not answering no more calls. We relaxed, we don't have to worry about that pager goes off. St. Tantia's gonna go answer the calls if we got any that night. So my people and everybody else could literally sit down and relax. They not had that work. This, the number, since this incident, the number of calls we've been having lately has been unreal. I do know I have to finish my reports and my last time I had, I'm over two hundred reports I gotta get back. I got about fifty back right now. So a lot of work, a lot of work on my end also, you know, so. But again, thanks for the support and the outpour from everybody, you know, thanking us. That's what we're here for. That's what we train to do. You know, that's what we do for the town, for anybody. But we appreciate it. We do not have enough either as a chief, neither does EMS, and neither does you guys, what you guys do behind the scenes.
Just to touch on something there, there was a man that went on that fire department's neck response was amazing to my eyes. I mean, that was, that was a show of manpower and support showed up from Fredericks Town. Lady worked our magistrate's offices for Fredericks Town, her husband's one of the swift water boaters who leave now. I didn't get into this earlier in my report, but kind of give the rest of the story from the police side where we were at when this all went down. Personally, me and my girlfriend and two oldest kids were having dinner at South Hills Village, watching the rain come down. After about an hour of it, right before the alerts went off, I said, it's gonna be a long night, town's gonna flood, there's no doubt in my mind. Not knowing it was gonna be as bad as well, it's been, you knew it was coming, there was no avoiding it, we had a lot of rain. So I'm trying to call the guys who were on duty and unfortunately, they had to respond to a domestic call. I believe it was on Tank Street. Shortly after the domestic ended, the, I believe it was the female grabbed her chest and passed away. So now we have an investigation on our hands because we had a death toll on the domestic school. And that had the guys tied up. So that, they had county police come out and get the ball. So that was, as the rain was pouring down, they were tied down with that and something else happened.
So that was, as the rain was pouring down, they were tied down with that, and something else happened. It was just a total mess, anything that could go wrong went wrong, everybody was busy. So we came back here, hooked up with Chili-o down here, I went in the service, my cargo shorts and T-shirt, put on my rain jacket, and that, that was the beginning of it, called out the other ships early, and, uh, you know, it's the third time I've watched boats get launched from railroad streets since two thousand and four. What can you say, in those words by far?
I also want to thank my daughter.
Yes.
Waking her up at one o'clock in the morning to come down to help us with the animals, being she works at the veterinary hospital, to make sure they got the water and everything else, you know, she's awesome with that. But it was perfect. Like I said, everything went very well, I was very happy how it went, sorry.
That's all right, it's just the timing and everything, like I said, I look at it, and you know, I say, there's a daycare center there, and there's also a doggy daycare center. If this happened during the day, this would have been ten times worse. We're lucky it happened when it did.
Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Doug, chief.
Thank you. Oh, tickets, I got tickets.
There you go.
There's all my tickets.
Before they all bailed out.
I know.
Are you making this for the whole society?
I gave you people all the stuff, but I still have to get that table done, and I'm selling their apple tickets.
Where you are.
Yeah, this time it's the Pirates, August the fifth, sunny afternoon. Four seats and, and pass.
Falls hockey, falls hockey thing.
Every hockey all around. This is, uh, from the company I work for, given this.
Great, thank you very much.
So you draw them for that in the next week or so, tonight I'll start soon, very soon.
Uh, nobody from the library, pardon me, Lori, Lori, I think you.
Old business?
Your business?
I'd, I'd just like to ask, between public safety and our solicitor, to start some kind of, um, legislation for the dumpsters, because to me, I think that was one of the key issues. And that, all them dumpsters in that valley need to be tethered in some way.
We're the obvious, because this, I believe, we already have, and I'll, I'll check us, we, you know, our fee board is, that we give, document, and they already be part of it, it's not.
Yeah, we, I'm just going down there and seeing all them dumpsters, that's really disturbed me the most. But between that, car that got in there, I watched them pull that pile apart down there, and that, uh, we need to control that.
Is that the trailblazer?
Huh?
The trailblazer?
I have pictures of all of them, so it makes sense. We, we get, we can at least get down under control and work towards that, logs and everything else or other stuff.
We, we actually pulled out, just, I forgot about that, you say cars, we actually pulled out twelve cars and thirty-plus dumpsters uh, for them to move out of the park.
That's what I'm saying.
All right, um, we're gonna adjourn, and then we'll, we'll have executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I just want to say one thing. Without Bill, I wouldn't have ever survived. And I want to thank you for everything, because.
Thank you, and it's continuous, awesome, Bill was the leader.
You know, it was just overwhelming, it's still overwhelming, and it's upsetting, you know?
Yeah, I didn't stop much. I went thirty-eight hours without sleep from the first time it started.
My, my, my husband asked me why, why I was staring at the blank wall on him, I said, just please don't talk, just, just please don't talk.
Can I ask one more thing before you, you adjourn?
Yep.
That, since I didn't get, you know, I wanted to say, but, um, other little things that you might do to help the residents, you know, I'm sorry, but maybe calling John Watson up and, and see if we, you know, adjust the, you know, is there any chance calling Albinian and, uh, the water company to see if they can give us a break? Because, you know, I mean, like my hose never stopped running, you know, for three or four days. And, uh, and now I'm, I'm starting to walk around a little bit here, and the story is that a lot, some people that have flood insurance aren't getting stuff that they were kind of promised. And I was just wondering if our solicitor could step in and help if, if there's a legal battle between why, why this isn't insured and stuff.
I can help with your permission, give folks, guys, technically, I'm the borough solicitor, and you know, I know, it's a, it's a, you know, certainly like everybody else can take a look at an individual situation, and I'll put in some assistance, if we are not allowed a lot of help in the record.
But is he able, be able to help them out a little bit?
What we should do, we should all, all together, the, this area, or not the area, the flat, we should all together ask for flood insurance together, and charge according to, to, to what you, what you add, it's a court, how much you want. But if we all get that flood insurance, probably have a better rate.
It's, it's routine, you know?
It's, it's all, yeah, I think it is. It's, that's right.
You know, I'd be happy, I'd be, I'd be happy if I'm, even if I can't technically be happy helping, but obviously, you put them in the right.
Do you hear me? Lead them in the right direction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.